Okay, good evening, everybody, and welcome to the July 11, 2023 Board of Education meeting for Arlington Heights School District 25. Thank you for being patient today. I assure you, your board has been working. I can vouch for these good, fine people here at the board table. Has been working really hard for you, and we had a closed session before this that ran a little bit over. So thank you for your patience as we, with all the construction and getting to different bathrooms in the hallway. So thank you for being here. I call the meeting to order for July 11, 2023. Lana, could you please call the roll? Michael?
Here.
Nieman?
Here.
Scott Bellato?
Here.
Jogi?
Here.
Sir Niglia?
Here.
Thank you so much. If you could please stand, if you're able, for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll start off this evening with the superintendent's report. Dr. Biden, if you could please review any FOIA items with us?
Thank you. The board does have a list of the Freedom of Information Act requests that the district has received in the month of June, and all of those have been responded to.
Excellent. Thank you. And they've all been listed here. This evening, we are really happy and would like to welcome Chief Pacora and Deputy Chief Pennello this evening for the meeting. As the community knows, the board previously discussed the topic of expanding our school resource officer partnership per request from the Arlington Heights Police Department. The board asked Dr. Biden to bring back more research, which she has, and today is part of that information gathering for the board. And so this research-based information that we'll kind of go over again today and in more depth, and so that the board can make a thoughtful decision. And we'd like to, again, welcome both of you here today to our meeting. Thank you for coming. And so, Dr. Biden, if you could provide your updated report to the board, and then our guests, if you will love to, I'm sure will have questions for you. So we're excited to hear from you as well.
Thank you. I'd like to invite Chief Pacora and Deputy Chief Pennello up to the table. They will have some points to share with the board, possibly throughout my presentation or afterwards, and then, again, they're here to also answer questions as well. Thank you again for being here. Appreciate it. Before I go through the slides, as Dr. Jogi said, the board requested after our initial discussion on school resource officers in May, that I pulled together some resources to share with the board to show you what research we've utilized here about the positive and negative impacts of school resource officers according to the literature. I want to make sure that I express to you that definitive research is difficult to find. In studies that support the incorporations of school resource officers, there are also statements that say success is less reliable when there's not a clear outline of duties or expectations are lacking for the role. On the other hand, studies that demonstrate the negative effects of school resource officers also include statements in them that recognize that these concerns occur, again, when a school resource officer is directly involved in the discipline of students or when the school and school resource officer relationship doesn't have a clear definition of duties and expectations. So whether, and I'll highlight some of that in my slides for you as well. It is important for me to remind you that in this District 25 discussion, we're talking about not the old, traditional school resource officer position, but a well-rounded school resource officer program that includes providing safe, physical, and emotional learning environments for students, providing valuable resources and training for our staff, mostly fostering positive relationships with youth and families and staff through mentoring, through coaching, through problem-solving together with our administrators, and protecting all students, every single one of them, so that they can reach their full potential, similar to what we have had for decades with our part-time school resource officers in District 25. We're talking about expanding that same mission. Our current school resource officers and any future SROs that the board should decide to add do not get involved in student discipline. They don't take any actions that our administrators would take if they weren't there. Our administrators and staff are charged with student discipline. Our school resource officers do not fill that role or participate in discipline. They do currently participate when a student maybe returns to school to meet with them and the administration and their parents together and talk about, how you doing? Are you ready to come back? How are you feeling? Do you need support? Right? So they help in that re-entry process, but never in determining discipline. That's our responsibility of our administrators. Also, I want to highlight, we are not talking about school resource officers in District 25 because we have any increase in negative student behavior or because we see a rise in criminal activity in our schools, nor have we brought this to you as a way to prepare for a critical incident. Okay? We're talking about expanding on the relationship building and the positive mentoring and impact and service to our community. I do want to be realistic, though, and many board members have asked about this on behalf of the community. There are members in our community that have some very strong opinion about this topic, most typically for two reasons. One, because they're looking through a lens of school resource officers in research show excessive discipline or negative impact on marginalized students, or because they're looking through a lens of, we need to be proactive to have trained, armed police officers in case of a critical incident. Right? So those are realities in what people are thinking. They're not the reason we brought this topic to the board. Right? We're talking about expanding, and we'll go through that, but we know that people have expressed both sides of that issue to me and to the board. So because of those perceptions, I will review some research that relates to that with the board. But again, I just want to emphasize that District 25 administrators brought this topic to the board for the following two reasons. One, a request by the Arlington Heights Police Department to expand our partnership in order to increase their service to the community, which, as you know, aligns with our strategic plan in expanding our partnerships. And for the second reason, to expand on the positive relationship building and support that our current school resource officers have provided to our students, to our families, and to our staff over the last couple of decades. So whatever the board decides eventually, I know tonight you're just doing some more conversation, gathering some more information, whatever the board decides is right for our school district community, I know that you join me in expressing our great appreciation to our current school resource officers. Officer Malik, Officer O'Leary really have been very impactful, value-added members of our community, volunteering their time outside of serving in their time as school resource officers. We've been very fortunate to have them providing safety lessons, training our district staff, and the many positive connections they've made during the school day and by attending and participating in extracurricular activities. So again, we express our appreciation to those school resource officers who have been serving us very well. So with that lengthy, but I feel important, introduction, I'd like to take the board through Part Two of our school resource officer presentation. Again, the lens we're considering is the service to the district and our entire community. This aligns with our strategic plan where our mission is to empower an inclusive, diverse community of learners to innovate and thrive as global citizens. Specifically, it falls under the second of the five goals in our strategic plan, that one that's related to family and community. And even more specifically, under that goal of strengthening family and community relationships to enhance learning, teaching, and partnership, I'll draw your attention to the last comment there. Part of that strategic plan, develop effective partnerships with our community agencies, higher education, and District 214. That's why this topic falls in our strategic plan through 2025. So tonight, I hope to share with my colleagues what is a school resource officer? What is our current partnership? I know we talked about that last time. I just want to remind us about that. Talk about the proposed partnership, starting in the 23-24 school year, should the board choose to approve that. I'll share quickly the resources, the vast, there are a vast amount of resources, the ones that I used, and what each of those resources say in their research, and then share with you, you know, there are many options for the board to consider. I'll share some examples for you to help with your discussion. So what is a school resource officer? Again, we're talking about not the old, traditional school resource officer, but a more well-rounded program that we've had in District 25 for many, many years, where our school resource officers provide valuable resources for school staff members, fostering positive relationships with youth, developing strategies to resolve problems affecting youth, and protecting all of our students so that they can reach their full potential. I like the kind of description that the National Association of School Resource Officers says, that they consider this a triad concept, meaning that there's three roles to a positive school resource officer, one being an educator and teaching all of us, our students and our staff and our community about safety, being an informal counselor and mentor to our students, and always a law enforcement officer as well. So the Village and District 25 currently have a partnership. We have for, I don't even know how long, at least a couple of decades. Our current partnership has two full-time school resource officers. That increased a few years ago after many years of having one school resource officer. As the board knows, the Village of Arlington Heights pays 100% of our school resource officer compensation, salary, and benefits. That is unusual. I have not found another school district that has even a part-time resource officer where a school district doesn't pay a portion of that cost. So we very much benefit and appreciate the Village covering that cost, and that shows the Village's commitment to the importance of the position as well. Currently, our two resource officers actually serve 19 Arlington Heights schools, and then they support four other schools that have school resource officers in them by doing some of their investigations and whatever support they need. But of those 19 schools, nine of those are District 25 schools, all of our elementary and both of our middle schools. They do spend significant amount of their time at South and Thomas Middle Schools because we have large school enrollments there. Right? We have 900, sometimes close to 1,000 students at our middle schools. Those are much larger than typical middle schools, and so simply by the fact that there's more students, more activities, more staff, more classes to teach, our school resource officers, while they serve those 19 schools, do spend a large amount of their time at South and at Thomas. So the partnership that we're proposing moving forward is, on the left, two full-time school resource officers, oh, sorry, that's the current, let me just catch myself up, two full-time school resource officer positions where the Village of Arlington Heights pays 100% of the compensation. So that's the two we currently have. Those would continue. Those roles would still be there, but they would serve 17 Arlington Heights schools because they wouldn't serve Thomas and South anymore if we added. They would now support six more schools that have SROs, so the four that currently are supported, and Thomas and South if they each had their own school resource officer. And again, our elementary schools would also be served. So those are the two current positions would continue to stay if we add additional positions. So on top of those, we're requesting two full-time school resource officer positions where the District 25 budget pays for their salary and the Village pays for their benefits. Those two school resource officer positions would be assigned only to South and to Thomas. So the proposal is a full-time school resource officer at Thomas, a full-time school resource officer at South, and then, again, those other two positions we currently have would still serve our elementaries and provide support to the officers that would be at South and Thomas. So one of the important things I want to make sure the board knew there is that this is in addition to, and we wouldn't lose our current services. In fact, we would gain services. So I'm not going to go through all of these, but this is the resources that I used for this report, and what I wanted to highlight here are, there are organizations, and I'll show it in my slides, that are sharing primarily the research that expresses concerns about having school resource officers in schools, and there are resources here that are very pro having school resource officers, and they're showing their research to support that. All of these organizations, whether they're sharing organization advocating for or against school resource officers, all of them appropriately, as research should say, but let me give you some, here, let me give you some boundaries here, or let me tell you why our viewpoint isn't 100% true and why it might be different in some situations. That's what good research does, right? It tells you the reality of the facts. It doesn't give you all one view and none of the other. Again, definitive research is difficult to find. There are studies, again, supporting and studies demonstrating some negative impacts of school resource officers. Again, we're going to talk about the context of each piece of research to ensure that we're not just capturing a phrase or one piece of research or something that we Googled on the Internet, but that what the full, encompassing research actually says. And as a reminder, the District 25 and Arlington Heights Police Department partnership's primary purpose is school-to-community service through positive police-student relationships. But school resource officer-related research is most often focused on their impact on student discipline and/or their impact on school shooter incidents. There's almost no research at this point definitive that talks about what we're talking about, and that's the positive relationship piece, without it also talking about student discipline concerns or critical incidents that could happen. So from the Illinois Law Enforcement Training and Standards Board, I want to make sure we've had questions before about training of school resource officers. The law in Illinois, and I believe it was 2021, it's fairly recent, now requires that any agreements between school districts and local law enforcements must be in writing. For example, the board talked about would we have a memorandum of understanding, right? Something beyond just a contract. That is legally required now that we spell that out. Also, school resource officers must be certified, and ours are, ours are, as having completed the necessary course of instruction. This certificate, being a, having a school resource officer certificate, is obtained by completing the Standards Board's 40-hour curriculum course. This is something initiated by the police department. They came to us years ago and said, our officers, we'd like them to be certified. They'd like to be certified. We really appreciated that, them taking that initiative, and we do support our officers in providing them training through the state association and the national association. Some of those topics that are covered in that 40-hour curriculum, and I know the board has a lot of detail in the handouts, the public has access to those as well, those details actually show you every course, right? So you can delve into that if you want, but in general, the topics covered are general school resource officer information, juvenile law, officer and youth interactions, and school threat response. A school resource officer's certificate is valid for two years and must be renewed, and as the board knows, this past month, our school resource officers did attend the state training down in Bloomington-Normal. So here's a variety of the research that's out there. Our National PTA recognizes that school safety is a multifaceted issue with no one clear solution for each community. Any decision regarding physical security measures must be locally determined, collaborative, and specifically include input from students, parents, families, educators, school leaders, and the community. I will tell you that the general thought of, when you review National PTA's research, you walk away at first thinking, oh, they don't support school resource officers, till you really read the research and the statement really sums it up. The National PTA believes if the decision is made to have a school resource officer, there must be clearly defined memorandum of understanding between the law enforcement agency and the school that articulates the role of the SRO. This research source, excuse me, shares, "Schools should carefully weigh the unique needs of their communities when determining the need to hire additional security personnel or school resource officers. It is important to recognize that school resource officers differ from other school security personnel or armed guards. SROs are commissioned law enforcement officers who are specially trained to work within the school community, to help implement school safety initiatives as part of the school safety leadership team, and if the role is utilized, SROs should be integral participants in school life and student learning." This research, again, when you first look at it, you think they're going to be against school resource officers. What they're really doing is delineating security guards, bringing someone on site because of security concerns, and delineating that from the larger role of school resource The National Association of School Resource Officers endorses a collaborative approach to school safety. Teachers, administrators, SROs, counselors, and other mental health professionals and students must all work together to create a safe environment. They highlight carefully selected, specially-trained school resource officers who follow the national best practices, do not arrest students for disciplinary issues that would be handled by teachers or administrators if the SROs were not there. Again, just having them on site, in our experience, doesn't change who's responsible for what. We've never arrested a student with the school resource officers that we've had. We have no plan to do that. Discipline is done by our staff, by our administrators. And again, they point out that despite the fact that the prevalence of school resource officer programs has continued to rise, there are more SROs in schools across the United States. Juvenile arrests across the country have declined by 73% since 1996. Everytown Research and Policy Organization is, many of you may be aware of Everytown. They also partner with Moms, help me?
Demand Action.
Thank you. Moms Demand Action. I was thinking of two different mom groups, and they have a lot of great research available, very clear, very easy to understand, with a lot of great research-based references. Everytown Research and Policy says, "School resource officers don't stop school shootings, but they can harm students in criminalized typical adolescent behavior." Hang in there with me. "The practice of policing in schools, including the traditional school resource officer model, has not been shown to reduce school shooting deaths. Partnership with law enforcement and security and personnel in schools both certainly play vital roles in school safety. However, they must be used with training and guardrails to make sure they are making schools safe places for teachers and students." And they really share a lot of information about the research collected that can be categorized into three types of negative effects in the research they've done on school resource officers. Those negative effects include the categories of criminalizing students, repercussions on student learning, and the negative impact on students from historically marginalized groups, including students of color, students with disabilities, and our LGBTQ plus students. "In some school districts," they say, "police officers may receive additional training to equip them for working specifically with children, but many do not, resulting in increases in types of disciplinary actions and criminalizing measures." Again, I want to point out, in each slide, there's, there's a, here's our highlighted research, however, make sure you're understanding the research fully, right? Having armed police officers in schools can increase chronic absenteeism, and marginalized students have higher rates of discipline by school police. They recommend, "Invest in the proven school interventions," and I'm going to share this with you, and I want to say after each one, yes, we have this one, yes, we have this one, right? So we're adding to these. "Such as crisis assessment and prevention programs." We have that in District 25. "Emergency planning." We have. "Robust mental health support for students in crisis." We have. "Building a trusting school environment where students are willing to come forward when they hear something concerning." We're doing well on that. We always want to revisit, always want to make kids safe, to share information that they have. That's a journey we'll always continue on. "In districts where schools choose to have the presence of some sort of security, have an exclusively protective role, and be integrated within the school community, be answerable directly to school leaders, and receive training as peace officers with extensive focus on interacting with the school population and de-escalation and minimal, minimum use of force techniques." Right? They're describing our current positions. Integrated in the school environment, answerable to our administrators, here with their priority focus being peace officers, establishing relationships with students, helping them problem solve. On a recent publication by the U.S. Secret Service National Threat Assessment Center, this, I think I gave this to you in a publication, and I might have linked the video to you as well, if you wanted to see it quickly. This research was done to say, what can we figure out about when school shootings have been stopped before they've happened? Right? That's what that research is. And they give 10 key findings and implications in the report on averting targeted school violence. Number six of those 10 is that school resource officers have played an important role in school violence prevention. In fact, in 67% of the schools in that study, where violence was averted, they knew they had proved violence was going to occur and it was averted. Those schools had full or part-time school resource officers, with them playing a role in averting 33% of those planned attacks. So again, just another piece of information. Again, the research is growing, right? And there is definitely research, and when you, I'm sure many of you have read through in detail, as have many of our community members, the statistics on arrests, on discipline, on attendance concerns. But again, when you read that same report, you have to make sure that you also read that it's in situations where officers were hired because of discipline concerns, because of increased criminal activity, and hired without job role descriptions or understandings of their role and connection with school staff. That's not District 25, right? We're talking about our current positions that are serving us well, providing value to our kids, and talking about expanding that to impact service to our kids and also to the community. So the board has many options and to consider, and I'm just sharing a few here for you. Everything is an option. Some options for you are to decide to maintain our current partnership as it is, again, with the two part-time officers who serve us to the best capacity that they're able to do that. Another option is to expand on the partnership per the proposal that we've put in front of you, and that's adding two additional full-time school resource officers for which the district would financially cover salaries and the Village would cover benefits. Everything in between is an option. You could pilot a modified partnership. For example, decide to hire one school resource officer and assign them to split between Thomas and South. That's an increase in service, for sure, from what we have, but it's not all the way to two, so that's an option. And during that time, to, of course, direct us to collect data on what are kids' perceptions, how do, when do families interact with them? What are families' perceptions? Do we see any increase in... any increase in discipline or anything like that? So it could also be that next year is a time to collect some more baseline data to help the board make decisions as you continue to move forward. Or, like you did last time, the board can say, Dr. Byne, we need some more additional information, and here's some things that we'd like to continue to review. So with that, I want to thank you for, I know this was a lot of research in your packet. This was, I pointed it out for myself, and I know it's very large, and I appreciate you putting in the time to read through that, as well as the summary information that we've put together. I will, before we kind of answer questions, I'll ask my colleagues if you have anything you want to add, something I missed, something you want to expand on, or are you ready for us to open for questions?
I'll just make some real brief comments. Number one, thank you for allowing us to be here this evening, and we appreciate the invite, and thank you for the kind words directed at the Police Department. I have a deep connection to District 25. As a 41-year employee of the Police Department, I've had quite the opportunity to interact with staff and students on a positive nature. As I mentioned earlier, to some, my wife is a product at District 25, our three children are a product of District 25, and I have two grandsons that are currently enrolled in District 25. So there's, is some deep connection. How did we get here? A conversation that Deputy Chief Pinello and I had as part of our senior management meetings, I said, we're an accredited agency, we provide best practices, how do we up our game? What are we missing? And I drew back an experience on our interaction with the schools through the DARE program and the Too Good for Drugs program. And we lost that unfortunately due to the 2006, 2008 economic downturn. We had to lay off three officers, and they were assigned to the schools as Too Good for Drugs officers. And although I didn't participate in that program through my career path, I had plenty of opportunity to interact with the officers that did, and they would always bring back the stories about the positive interactions, the positive rapport that they've built with the students. And then as I got promoted to a supervisor in the Community Services Bureau that Deputy Chief Pinello oversees and where the school resource officers are assigned, as the sergeant there, I would attend the Too Good for Drugs graduation. And I would see those beaming faces as the Too Good for Drugs or DARE officer would call those kids up to the stage. And those fifth graders, I had to put my sunglasses on to keep the teeth from blinding me, but they were so infatuated with the fact that they got to interact with police officers for that time during that window that they received the curriculum. And I said, that's what we're missing, is the connection. And under my tenure, I want to build bridges. I want to get that rapport back out there and make those connections. And I think this is an area that we are doing a good job, but we can do a better job and make some improved connections. So that's the conversation that we had, and then Joe carried the message on to Dr. Byne and said, is there an interest in exploring a full-time position? And that's how we got here today. So again, I appreciate your time. I wouldn't make any comments other than reiterating and affirming what you said, Dr. Byne. I listened to part two, and I had the opportunity to read part one, and your points are on, right on point. So I support and affirm everything you said. The research is valid, and we wouldn't do anything different than hit those salient points as we move the program forward. So thank you.
Thank you so much. Did you say 41 years, Chief?
Forty-one years.
Oh, my gosh.
May of 1982.
That's a really long time. We're lucky to have you in our community as you as well. I really, you know, I'm going to go back to a couple of things before I open it up to my colleagues as well, and I'm not going to start with questions. I'll let my colleagues do the talking with the questioning first. But first, I want to thank Dr. Byne, you know? This board does not take this topic lightly, and this is part of our due diligence in really getting all the information. We look through the packet, we look at all the research. So we really appreciate you, Dr. Byne, presenting us with vast research based on diverse literature review and your outreach to community collecting different viewpoints. We know that with my conversations with you as well, Dr. Byne, just as recent as yesterday, like, community members have been contacting you, have been contacting us as individual board members as well. And so we've really been taking in diverse perspectives, right? And this is another opportunity for us to gather all the information so that as board members, we can make a data-informed decision, right? That is always our goal. We don't take this lightly at all. Earlier, as individual board members and parents in the community, Liz and I attended a Moms Demand Action meeting, really gathering perspectives, and we're part of, you know, a group, a great group like that in our community. So we're so lucky that they're part of our community and active parents on both, on all sides with different perspectives. And so right now, I'm going to open up the floor to my colleagues for any questions that you may have about the research that was presented.
Madam President.
Yes, Liz.
This is, I guess, a question for Dr. Byne and also the Chief and Deputy Chief. All of you feel free to jump in. Like Dr. Byne, you mentioned, a common thread through all of the research is the importance of this defined memorandum of understanding. Now, if we're partnering with another agency, how do you see this memorandum being prepared? Who's responsible for it? Who has a say? Where did it come from? How do we maintain it? How do we evaluate it? I know this is still an idea, but what thoughts do you have about that process?
Sure. And we have started that, should we move down this road. So we've also, should the board choose to move in this direction and any amount of level, we've got a job description that we've been working on that's very detailed. And so what would happen is the Police Department does have a contract that they utilize with school districts. They'd provide us with that contract. We would review it and then together say, let's add an attachment, per attached memorandum of understanding and attached job descriptions. We have some details to that. And that would become part of that contract. And both parties would have says in what that memorandum of understanding has. We need to agree to that, right? A memorandum of understanding are our agreements. And if both parties agree to those, then it, from an administrative perspective, then we bring it to the board, and the board approves a contract with a job description and a memorandum of understanding attached.
Any further questions? I feel like saying, don't all jump at once.
Madam President.
Yes, Kevin.
Thank you, Chief Bakora and Deputy Chief Pinello, for being here tonight and for your service to our community. One of the questions that I brought up at the first presentation to Dr. Byne was regarding the content of the SRO curriculum, which, Dr. Byne, thank you for providing some detailed examples of some curriculum. So I'm curious if either of you gentlemen has had an opportunity to attend SRO trainings to see firsthand what those look like and what the officers experienced during that time.
I did. I did attend SRO training many years ago. I was a juvenile investigator in the early 2000s, so I have been through that class. I also am a juvenile skills specialist. I've been through that class. Those are mandatory training, 40-hour training classes that we put our SROs through. And another thing I can offer you is what I did prior to this meeting. I went through all our current SROs' training files, and I looked at all the common training classes they have gone through or go through on an annual basis that are pertinent to the role of an SRO. I have a list of them. If you want me to go through them, I'd be happy to. Would that help you out in any way, just so you have an understanding of the training?
Yes, that'd be great. Thank you.
Okay. Sorry, I got to put my readers on. So as I previously mentioned, the 40-hour juvenile skills program, the 40-hour Oletsby School Resource Officer Training Program, 16-hour sexual assault investigator training, rapid deployment active threat training, which we do annually, rescue task force, which we do annually, tactical medical training, which we do annually, response to resistance, which we do annually. We do an annual law update and use-of-force review, cultural competency, including implicit bias and racial and ethnic sensitivity, civil rights training, human rights training, reporting child abuse and neglect, crisis intervention training, which we do annually. As Dr. Byne stated, we try to get our SROs to attend the Illinois School Resource Officer Association Conference, that's an annual conference, and also the National Association of School Resource Officer Conference. And then also, they attend various school safety and threat assessment trainings throughout the course of the year.
Thank you. Forgive me if I missed this. Was there any mention of, or are there a specific number of hours spent on adolescent development and teen brain development?
Forget I got to turn that on. I'd have to look at the curriculum in the Oletsby School Resource Officer class. I believe that is hit on, and I do have a copy of that, but to go through it, I'm pretty sure that is part of that training, that 40-hour training.
It is part of that training. And I'll just add, as we all know, as we go to conferences for work or other organizations, I've been to the National School Resource Officer Conference probably five times in my career. In my last 10 years, I've been to the state conference once and the national conference twice. And in addition to the coursework, one of the greatest things, like we all experience, is the opportunity for our school resource officers to interact with other school resource officers from across the state and across the country. Excuse me. And they learn a lot about different districts and how they handle things, and large districts and small districts, and partnerships. Most recently, this month, we had a long conversation during the conference about all the things that our school resource officers were able to share with others, to offer how we do it. Because our program is successful here. That's why we're talking about expanding it. But I just want to say that, yes, the coursework is there, right? But it's also that chance to be at those experiences with others in this role and share what goes well and what ideas they can glean from each other.
I'm going to jump in with a question. Deputy Chief Pinello, you mentioned that the officers go through cultural competency training. And so, so this is a two-part question. Dr. Byne, with that, how, as far as the job description, how would you envision, would the officers that are working in our school, in our middle schools, would they be part of the professional development that is happening currently to, you know, make our strategic plan come alive as far as professional development, courageous conversations, and all the training that our teachers are going through?
Absolutely. Absolutely. They're a part of that as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam President.
Yes, Greg.
I had, before I jump into my comment, Dr. Byne, just so I understood the answer to the question, was that they would or they already do participate in those?
So I would say they do to the extent that they're available, right? And another school doesn't need them to teach courses for kids or for a situation. But if they were here full-time, then they would full-time.
Understood. Okay. Chief and Deputy Chief, I want to add my thanks to you for being here and to the service that you provide and all the men and women, you know, in the force. You talked about your strong connection to the district. My uncle and my cousin are police officers and serving honorably, and so I just want to say thank you to start out. For me, as we're discussing this, you know, we have, as you said, Dr. Byne, we have a successful program, right? So why all the attention? Why so much thought? And as a board member, I see, you know, well, now, not that the program currently isn't under our oversight, but it really, really talking about taking on an MOU and a contractual agreement. And so I just wanted to say, we're not talking about this, for me, I'll speak for myself, I'm not interested in all these details because of a problem or a concern about an existing program. It's just, this is really coming into our oversight if we were to expand in the ways suggested. And then, so how to move forward, these are the things I'm thinking about. And Dr. Byne, thank you for highlighting, you know, how an MOU fits into potentially increasing service. And there are, you know, organizations that provide guidelines, you know, that we could build in. I want to suggest that there's another component we haven't talked about because the SROs are partners in the relationship, and the other side of that is our staff. And that, though we're talking about the SRO side, how those two parties interact is also crucial. And I would be interested, not necessarily today, but in, well, honestly, even if we didn't do any changes, how that looks. And so where I'm going with this is, also, the other piece, besides the staff, you know, we talked about MOU and staff, but then the other piece I'm interested in is, then how do we evaluate either our current program, right? If we just want to be intentional about understanding our current situation, or any potential expansion in service? And you mentioned, Dr. Byne, how we might collect data on perceptions within the community from students' perspectives, staff perspectives, but also understanding how these, the partnerships interact, both qualitative and quantitative. And I want to suggest, you know, we do have a different, you know, different options in front of us that at least, and I'm not, I just want to throw it out as an option, not putting my thumb on it necessarily, but that we have a successful program, and we're spending a lot of time talking about, well, then how would we put all these pieces into place? And maybe we have the perfect test program right now. It's a program we value. And that comment is not precluding any potential future expansion, but really understanding and putting, I just, understanding, again, qualitative or quantitative, behind the thing that we value, and maybe, though we don't have an MO, I don't think, do we have an MOU around it? No. So there's, I mean, we're not going to evaluate it, right? We're not going to add a component that's, that would be inappropriate, but we could take that understanding to then build it out. And I want to be clear to Dr. Byne and your staff and Chief and your staff that I'm not suggesting I don't trust you couldn't build things between, if we were to approve an expansion today, but it's really to be intentional about understanding what we have and value, and then understanding if there's gaps in service. Like, I just asked you, could they be part of that training? And I understand the answer, but then we could go, well, there were these three opportunities that we just couldn't, we couldn't fit them in because they had other commitments. Or we made a call for support under, in these categories, and they weren't available. Okay, now I understand what an expansion of service. And to me, it comes then, like, one of the suggestions is we could add a full-time, one FTE, right? And pilot and collect data. I would suggest that, that might be, that's unfair, maybe to the individual and maybe to the board and everyone in between, because what would you say if we go, well, that's not a right-sized fit? In any way, we, you know, I think if, I don't know, it just seems like that could be potentially unfair, or at least, you know, given the current relationships we have with those SROs that are involved in our schools, we really value them. And I would want to have that, all the information to go, that's it, or it's one and a half, or it's two, or it's, I don't know, right? Like, I don't know what those answers are. It's not a question of, and Dr. Byne, you've shared this, about value-add. We value what these SROs do, and I can't think of a program we have that if we said we could do more of that, would that be awesome? Yeah. Right? Like, so, so how do we know how much? And I'm just going to add that in my mind to those options of intentionally collecting information so that at some future date, we would come back and go, now, what's the right answer for if and how we might expand?
Yeah, thank you for that. And again, these, really, the options I gave you are, like I said, just options and examples. 1.0 is really just, okay, if we didn't want to go all in, what if we want half in? Could be one and a half, could be quarter, could be use the year to collect data, and then decide from there as well. So everything is an option, of course. So, everything is an option, of course.
To my board colleagues, I'm kind of looking at, I want to be sure we hear all perspectives. So, if there's any other perspectives, yeah, let's go ahead.
Madam President, my, your answer will most likely be anecdotal, but I'm just curious, if we have a full-time officer in each school, what might you guess his or her day looks like? Like, what, what are the things that might typically happen? Because, you know, we're sharing, but all of a sudden, we have this. What, what might happen?
I'll start, if that's okay? I would say, you know, we're expanding the value that they're bringing. They're teaching more classes with staff members, right? A police officer never teaches a classroom of kids without a certified staff member, just like no other person teaches a group of kids without a certified teacher. We're teaching more safety classes. They're doing more interactions in advisory programs. They're available for more of the team of staff who provide mental health interventions and who brainstorm about students, especially those students who have community-concerned connections. So, they'll become a more active and available member of that team that's meeting daily to problem-solve on kids who need some extra wraparound supports. They're creating with colleagues and presenting parent education programs. They're even doing some things like helping with traffic in the morning and the afternoon, helping us all remember as adults the safe ways to drive around a school, drop our kids off as well. They're interacting in health classes, in our creative arts classes, they're giving guest speeches, they're being visible in the hallway and at lunchtime with other colleagues so that kids have opportunities to informally get to know them, interact with them in positive, safe ways, as opposed to, what I know about a police officer is, my mom said, oh, no, we're in trouble because I was speeding, right? Instead, I can go home and be like, I hung out with Officer Malik, he's at our wrestling meets all the time, and he helps out, and I got to talk with him at lunch. And Officer O'Leary was, you know, here for the event at my elementary school. And so, it's, it's more opportunities to interact with the kids informally, in planned, but in formal ways. It's really just expanding, again, right now, they, they do a great job, but we share them. So, it's having them do ourselves and being able to together create a better, robust curriculum in an ongoing way where they could co-present to kids on a variety of safety topics.
I turned the mic on this time. It's difficult to say this is a day in the life of an SRO, because we're going to respond to the needs of the individual schools and the staff and administration at each school. But one thing Dr. Byne just hit on is the intangible things, the consensual encounters, the positive interactions with the students. And that will go on all day long, every day. So, I agree with what Dr. Byne said, all the planned events and scheduled things they're going to engage in. But most importantly, from my opinion, is those positive relationships they're going to develop with those students in the formative years of the junior high, middle school age kids.
If I could just tip in on that, you talked about in the hallways, and again, going back to the Too Good for Drugs days, they used to be in the hallway high-fiving the kids, and that's how you develop the rapport with the kids. And the kids develop the impression, instead of, like you mentioned, oh, no, we're getting pulled over, there's my first impression, mom or dad are not happy that they're getting stopped by the police. So, you let the kids form their own opinion, and I can draw my own impression in the last two years where we went to Olive and then to Thomas on High Five Fridays. And what a great way to energize those kids, is they come into the building at 8:30 in the morning, and there's six or seven police officers there, you know, just high-fiving them, saying, hey, have a great day, have a great day. And again, those beaming smiles, you can't get any better than that on a Friday. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing both those perspectives and all the great questions. I'm not sure if this is a question or my way of summarizing and also asking for my colleagues to provide some board direction here of what's next here. But the things, you know, that are sticking out for me is when, you know, Chief Picor was talking about the benefits of the DARE program that we lost, right? And the Too Good for Drugs days, and, and those building, those bridges, and that takes in any, and as we know, in any relationship building, it takes consistent presence. So, expanding that, as Dr. Byne was saying, expanding, so more opportunities means more positive interactions, and growing the rapport and building those connections, as the chief said, those were his goals, right? On the other side, I also hear, you know, the research, so of course, all research has the pros and cons, right? So, the other side, I'm hearing the concerns that community members, and I'm a mother as well, four children, right? So, the concerns of the criminalization of students, or how the impact with student learning, and for marginalized groups, and as we know, there has been an increase in 504 plans for our students. And so, one of the bullet points that you presented, Dr. Byne, was the importance of, do we have robust mental health support for students in crisis? And we have that in our district, but making sure that our job description, if we were to go that way, that our job description is in accordance with best practice, so that not only our teachers in our districts, who are phenomenal, right, have an understanding of what robust mental health support looks like, but that our SROs would have that, and that they be continuously trained, because this is a, it's an ever-changing world for our youth right now, post-COVID, and that when these SROs come in, we have high trust in our educators in this district, and that we look at our SROs as a part of that team, and that they're going through this rigorous journey of growth as well, in really understanding a student population that has gone through quite a bit in the last couple of years. So, I'm kind of hearing both sides of this, and I think, you know, building a trusting school environment with, with all the adults in the building, really important, right? So, what I've heard so far, as far as board direction goes, and correct me if I'm wrong, what I've heard so far is kind of one option, that more data be gathered on the current program, and the current program is really strong. So, from that, what can, what data can we get from what we have existing? And for Dr. Byne, you know, Dr. Byne said, well, we can't, so from a data standpoint, how can we collect all that data? I'm saying this for myself, not what Dr. Byne said, but how can we collect all that data because they aren't in the buildings for so long, right? So, but, that is an option on the table, more data gathering on the current program. I want to ask my board colleagues, are there any other options that you are entertaining for the sake of our community?
Madam President, I just want to add a footnote, I won't, because I brought up the suggestion, and as an educator, I always often think in school-year blocks, and though that's a great way to think about things in terms of onboarding new staff, I don't know that that has to be the case. And so, when I suggested collecting data, the timeframe, it might not be a year, right? It might be three months, six months. I don't, I don't know. So, I'm just, I'm just suggesting we can maybe think outside, what we traditionally talk about is school-year timeframes.
And Greg, you know, when I was speaking, definitely, I'm not saying it's a, it's a, I'm glad that it is an A, it's an idea, and thank you for putting it forward. It's a, right, a A direction forward, so thank you for putting that, sharing that. Are there any other options on the table that would be important? Brian, did I see you going for the button?
Yeah, I was going for the button. I kind of, I agree with Greg's sentiment about, you know, we want to expand everything, right? So, I'm a corporate marketing guy, so I look at everything from a, you know, cost-benefit analysis, and turn-on investments, and things of that nature. Coffer that with the fact that, you know, I grew up in Des Plaines, I was part of the Des Plaines Police Program as a youth, was outside of school, but I skied with them, I played, you know, wiffle ball with them in the gyms, I got to know them, paid off later and other reasons, but I won't get into that. But that sense of community, for me, that's really what strikes here. Like, we have, we have a really good process, and like anything else. I mean, how often do we talk about expanding technology and looking at our Wi-Fi? I mean, this is a resource, and we haven't evaluated this in the, you know, eight years that I've been on the board already. So, I feel like it's time we have this conversation first and foremost. And then, when you look at this as far as an investment goes, right? You've got two resource officers going between 24 schools, okay? Quick math tells me that that's 3.33 repeating hours a week at each school. So, if we really want them to be a part of our community and have a relationship, how much of a relationship do you have with anyone if you only spend 3.3, you know, hours a week in the space? Forget driving back and forth, forget breaks, forget, you know, all vacations, all that other stuff. That's just rough math. To go between 24 schools for two individuals, they're only going to be able to spend three hours at any, you know, one school in any given week. So, I can only envision that. When we first started talking about this, I asked Lori for the job description, even the existing one, so I had a better feel and understanding for what they're really doing, right? And then, this conversation has evolved from there. So, for me, the perspective is it's time we, we look at it. It's definitely an investment in our, not just our kids, our community as a whole, or being a good partner with, with the police department and making, you know, a combined investment and looking at a reevaluated plan moving forward. So, you know, the marketing cost-benefit ROI guy, I don't know how to put a dollar on it. I don't know how to get quantitative and qualitative data, but I know what my gut knows, and my gut knows we haven't looked at this in over eight years, we haven't changed what we have. I'm glad we're having the conversation. I think it's, it's going to pay huge dividends. I think it's just a matter of settling in on the how. I'll also throw in that I kind of share, Greg, your reservations about what we don't know. Is it one, is it five, is it 20? Hey, man, let's do something. That's, that's kind of where I'm at, even if it's the one, sharing part-time, at least we've made a significant, you know, beta test to differentiate from what we have today. So, that's my two cents. Oh, and on another side note, if we could bring Andy Wohl out of retirement and throw him back in our schools, I'd be a proponent of that, so I know, not possible?
Hey, Bento, I want to clarify, are you saying that we should do more data gathering of what we have right now? And then, kind of come back to the table and say, hey, what does this look like? Is it .1, is it one at each middle school? I want to clarify, what was, what was your direction?
Yeah, I mean, I guess I didn't, I didn't completely make that determination either. I mean, you know, this is one of those things that, I don't know that quantitatively or qualitatively assessing what we have today is a fair barometer for what we're talking about anyway, because we're talking about change. So, if we're going to put a microscope on the current process, you know, I just did some quick math, I can already tell you, these guys are only spending a couple hours a week at any given school, we already know that. So, I'm not, I'm not dismissing that, but I really don't think that's gonna, that's gonna do it. I really think we need kind of some change, an A/B test. Maybe it is, you know, one resource officer, at least we have one dedicated to school. I think I'm kind of behind that one. At least that way, we have a change, that's our beta test, we have something to gauge, you know, a barometer against what we had before. You know, I also want to look at how do the other two remaining officers now, you know, how much has their time increased in those other, what would it be now? You know, 18 schools, whatever it is, you know, I'm not doing the math correctly, but you know what I mean? The investment is twofold. We're going to get more of the existing two resource officers because they don't have to spend time in our middle schools, and we're now making, you know, a consorted effort and a change that could be evaluated. If, if we're apprehensive, I'm going right into two, you know, I'd be a proponent, I may be starting out with one.
Brian, thanks for your graciousness, I feel like I've been, put you on the spot, but, and of course, this is not an action item, right? Tonight, this is not an action item. We, it's information gathering, so it's just, hey, what is your perspective? What is your perspective? All great perspectives, and then for us to let it marinate a little bit more. And so, then, I guess, the, so then, I think, we have kind of, right, we're not taking action to it, but I'm hearing more data gathering on the current program. It is change, so let's move in a certain direction. So, I think we owe Dr. Byne kind of a direction as to what are, what's our input to Dr. Byne? What, where would you like Dr. Byne to go with this? Like, collect more data? Would you like Dr. Byne to come back with, Dr. Byne, what answers would you like from us?
Yeah, you're, you're exactly on the, asking the right things. Do you, are you ready for us to come back to you with a, here's what a job description memorandum of understanding contract looks like, right? So that you could then see that and be like, wait, here's pieces that we really like, or pieces that we're missing, or what have you. And that would be, and then, and then that helps you with further discussion on, do we want to go one or two, or have a year with like what we currently have and see what we can gather from that? I mean, is that information that helps you? Or do you want us to bring you a recommendation to move forward with increasing our school resource officer positions?
I have a question for you, Dr. Byne. So, when, if, if you were to come back to us with a job description, the memorandum of understanding, in that, is there current data that you could bring back to say, this is how the time is being utilized, these are the number of interactions, and these are the kind of, is there any kind of data that you could bring back to us for the current program?
I think it would be difficult. I think we'd more be starting with a full year. We could bring you, we could definitely have some of how many classes have they taught, right? How many trainings have they done of staff? We definitely have some of that. What we would probably be able to bring you is all the times that we've called them to help with a student or a family that was having struggles and asking for support from our police, all those individual situations. But we definitely could tell you, here's how many of the classes they've taught, how many other programs they've been a part of, how many train, staff trainings they've done, that we could definitely share with you.
So, I have another marketing project management thing, way to look at this too, is that, let's just say it's one for sake of this conversation. If we were looking to do this for the next school year, the question goes to you, gentlemen, how soon would we have to act in order to get a third resource officer trained in our schools?
Well, we could take our two school resource, resource officers right now and reassign them and backfill from patrol, but we're robbing Peter to pay Paul. Again, I'll date myself, in 1984, when I took the police exam, there were 1,200 people that showed up. We just offered the police exam, there were 46 people that took the test. It's just a sign of the times, nobody wants to be the police anymore. And of the 20-some that passed, we're going through that list pretty quick because the talent pool is pretty shallow. So, I still have a benchmark that's here, and I'm not willing to lower the threshold to compromise the value that we put forth as an organization. So, it takes a while for us to make sure an officer is fully trained and certified for solo patrol. We hired a young lady last week, she goes to the academy in August, she graduates the day before Christmas, and she's not going to be certified for solo patrol until spring break. So, she does 16 weeks, 20 weeks in the academy, 15 weeks with a field training officer, and then she's out on her own.
Yeah, so it was, and thank you, because that, you know, that's kind of what I'm thinking of, is like, if we're going to action on this, I don't want to, you know, boil the ocean, I don't want to overthink this, I don't want to overanalyze this, and then come back and say, hey, we're ready now, and now our partners here are going to tell us, great, we'll catch you in 2026 because you guys over, you know what I mean? Like, that's a reality I want to be mindful of, too. Something, I guess I put that back in Lori's lap, sorry. You know, keep us sane and honest on, you know, when do we need to act on, and how many conversations do we need to have before we actually, because I think it would be helpful for the entire process to get the MOU ironed out, fill in the blanks later with the details, get the, get the job description nailed down, fill in the numbers later, right? That sort of action is what I personally want out of seven voices, think we should be moving towards, while we think about, how do we measure it? How do we quantify the ROI? Is it one, is it two? Is it, you know, all of that stuff? But if we don't have a realistic timeline to work against, we're going to talk about this for three more meetings, and we're not going to have this opportunity until another year from now.
No, and thank you, Brian, for always being mindful of collective decision-making, and that we're a collective voice, and, and at the same time, having structure to move forward. So, and our time for this conversation, we do need to move forward. So, so where I'm hearing with this portion, sounds like what I'm hearing is, Dr. Byne, what did you hear?
Say, why don't, what I'm thinking is, why don't I bring to the board the data that we do have and show you what data that we wish we had, right? And so, bring to you what we have, what, where the gaps are, and information that we would like to have, that we wish we could share with you. share with you, and bring to you a job description and a memorandum of understanding. And then that'll kind of be all the information that's really available. And at that time, then the board would decide, do we want to move this to an action item, or is this not something we're ready to take, make a decision on? So you still can always decide, we're not ready to make a decision. But I'd like to move to the point, kind of like what Brian said, will we bring you the whole full package? Here's everything we know and everything there is, and what our recommendation is, and then the board decides to move forward or not from there. So I'm thinking, this is July, likely by the August meeting, we could have a memorandum of understanding, pretty close to finalize.
Absolutely.
Okay. So we could bring you that additional data from our schools, August. You could look at it then and see if you're ready to move it to an action item or not. Does that sound okay?
Madam President?
Yes, Kevin.
Just thinking back to what Greg was saying earlier about, you know, examining the value and the needs that we currently have, and then Brian talking about, you know, how do you find qualitative and quantitative data about something like this? So, Dr. Vine, you had mentioned trying to find information about like how many hours of certain programs or trainings or time with staff or with students. And I think, although that might be a small piece of quantitative data, I think it would definitely be valuable. In terms of qualitative data, I would be interested in hearing feedback from the administration and staff of our two middle schools about their thoughts on this proposal.
I can definitely bring you that.
That's an excellent suggestion. Thank you, Kevin. Having, and I want to say, in this time period, what I like about the plan moving forward, Dr. Vine, is that it gives the board more information to make an informed decision, right, including the perspectives of our educators and administrators in the building. But at the same time, I also want to encourage our community members in this time period, from what you've heard today, from our esteemed guests here, and from the conversation here, that it also gives us time to hear perspectives from our community. And so we encourage you to reach out to the board, reach out to Dr. Vine, so that we're really seeking and value, we continue to value community perspective on this topic. So it gives us time to collect all that information. So thank you so much, and thank you so much for coming. We've kept you here a little longer than we said we would, and we appreciate your time tonight.
It's all good. Madam President, members of the board, Dr. Vine, thank you for the opportunity to be on your agenda this evening to have this very important conversation. Deputy Chief Pinnell and I make ourselves available for any further follow-up comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Good night to you both.
Walk them out.
Yep. Okay, thank you. We will move on to the board communications portion of our agenda this evening. So as far as board member updates, I feel like the summer is going so fast. We could sit here and tell you all, but all the kid activities we're doing with our own families, but lots of board activities going on as well. So any updates from my colleagues? I feel like as a board, even with everything going on for the summer, we're very busy in our board responsibilities this summer. And I just want to say, I know from just the, you know, we value, you know, our strategic plan and things. And this summer, I just want to thank my board colleagues for the amount of work they've put in over the summer when the sun is shining on making sure that we're providing good feedback to Dr. Vine, making sure that we're looking at our strategic plan. You know, board members are out putting together plans to present at conferences and so forth. So I really just want to thank my board colleagues for the amount of work that you're doing, on top of taking your kids to the pool and ice cream and boating and everything else. So I appreciate it. An update from Ed Redd, Kevin. I know you have an update for us.
So there has not been, there have not been any meetings since, Ed Redd meetings, since the June board meeting. But on Thursday, August 3rd, I will have the opportunity to attend the Ed Redd Legislative Breakfast in Wheeling. So I'm looking forward to that. It's an opportunity to connect with other educators, other school board members, and local legislators to talk about issues concerning our schools. So I'll have, hopefully, a lot to share after that.
Yeah, no, thanks, Kevin. I'm so glad you put that in front of us as a board, you know, you put it in front. So that was August 3rd, correct?
Yes, correct.
And there's an email that we all have, so I double-checked with Lana, we're all invited. If we'd like to all go and attend this legislative breakfast, I was looking at my schedule, I might be able to make it as well. But if anybody else wants to come and hear and get an update, I'm glad, I would have missed it had you not brought it up. So thank you for bringing it up. And then as far as IASB, any updates? As you'll hear, like I just said, we've been working hard, putting together a presentation on our strategic plan to share the success in our district. So we're going to be presenting a panel at the conference coming up in November. So we actually met this week, board members were going to be presenting. So we're working hard at coming up with a really helpful conversation that other boards and other districts can benefit from what we're doing here in our district that we're very proud of. Anything else with IASB that I'm missing? I don't think I'm missing something. They continue to have workshops, I can't think of, I can't think of any right now. Oh, I can tell you one thing. So ISB had reached out to a couple of board presidents around the area, and I've been invited to give input on what good board president training would look like at the Illinois Association of School Board. So I'm going to be at a focus group next week, in person at the ISB offices in Lombard, kind of helping them restructure their training for board presidents around the area. So I'm really looking forward to have a conversation with colleagues around to see, how can, you know, how can we continue to improve this journey? And NSEO, Liz?
Sure, thank you. NSEO's board is currently on a little summer break for July. But recently, they named the Parent Education Resource Center, building after Dr. Judy Hackett, who just retired. Judy is responsible for establishing the center for parents that gives them an opportunity to meet, learn, share, and collaborate. So that was a very celebratory day and a nice thing for her. And I will report back in August after we have our August meeting.
Thanks, Liz. That's really sweet and very well deserved. That's amazing. That's good. So thanks for all the reports. We'll now move out to the community input section of our meeting. And then our first speaker we have this evening is Kristin Erman. Oh, yes. And before, Kristin, before, let me go over our directions and guidance for our community. I just want to remind us all that the opportunity to speak to the board is provided for members of the public who have a comment to make about the business of the board. The board appreciates hearing from stakeholders and values your thoughts and questions. As the board strives to make the best decisions for the district, public input is always helpful. In order for the board to reserve sufficient time to conduct its business and to operate its meetings in the spirit of civility and decorum, speakers are expected to follow these guidelines. Number one, address the board only at the time provided on the agenda, and only after being recognized by the board president. And number two, identify yourself and be brief. You'll have three minutes to share your comments this evening. And then please be respectful and courteous, and the board requests that you not make any statements that are personally disrespectful or condescending to members of the board and especially to our staff. And the board typically does not respond to comments or attempt to answer your questions during the public comment period, but we do listen intently and appreciate the input from our community. And as always, if you leave your email with us on this blue sheet and your phone number, you will get a call back from our district. So with that, welcome, Kristin.
Hello, thank you for having me. My name is Kristin Erman. I wanted to say that I have much appreciation for all that serve and protect. We are a family that greets all police officers we see on the street, and my children are always delighted by the waves and the chit-chat and the positive interactions we've had with all the officers throughout our town. I am here to say that I do not support armed resource officers in our schools or the expansion of the current program. You say that it is not for concerns of increased violence or increased risk of critical safety, and so then, in my mind, the program is unnecessary to be expanded. Why must an officer whose primary role it is to be an integral part of learning and student life be armed? You said in your presentation that Arlington Heights District is not considering this as a response to the public concerns about safety, yet while acknowledging that the majority of the public wants the program expanded due to a rise in school shootings. When I hear you describe the roles, or the goals, excuse me, of the SRO, what I think is that additional social workers or neuropsychologist positions, whose job descriptions it includes to roam around and socialize and interact in the moment with the students, and focus on social skills development and meeting the emotional needs of students, would fulfill your goal of the SROs without the presence of weapons in schools. I did have a couple follow-up questions. Is it necessary, if, I don't know the parameters, if a police officer is in the school campus, do they need to have their weapon with them? How often have the SROs at the high schools in our community, as well as those two currently employed at our junior highs, removed their guns from their holsters while in our schools? And how many times has a student needed to be physically detained by the current SROs?
Thanks so much for the questions and the input, and we will get back to you from the district. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is William Boudreau. Welcome, William.
Yeah.
I'll take the 28 seconds.
Add those odds. Thanks, Adam.
After I spoke at the last meeting, I received an email from Superintendent Vine, which reads in part, "Mr. Boudreau, I wish we could speak in person or by phone. I am concerned that you feel anyone on our staff or on the board is taking potshots at you. That simply is not true. Dr. Jogi was making sure that Mr. Schultz knew the board appreciated his presentations in defense of comments you made that insinuated he was not being transparent with his reports. Our Board of Education members are volunteers serving their community. They get no salary nor any compensation of any kind for their service. They are genuinely interested in the community's input at the board's meetings." As far as that is simply not true, the sentence, "Dr. Jogi was making sure Mr. Schultz knew." My concern was $48 million was approved for the kindergarten expansion, $16 million was approved for the capital improvements. Mr. Schultz subtracted those $16 million from the $48 million and came up with $32 million. I think if you read it, it's $20 million. Of the $8 million that he subtracted from the Westgate, 5.9 million is for removal of the galvanized pipes, $150,000 is for playground equipment, $9,500 is for AC repair, $8,500 is for replacement of the grease trap in the kitchen, $100,000 is for window repairs." It goes on and on and on. $32 million is if you subtract 16 from 48. Well, $48 million is for the kindergarten alone. So that, that's what I was trying to get at. And he comes down as a starting cost for Westgate is $12 million as opposed to the $22 million that you approved. So that was the insinuation that he was trying to indicate that it was a lot less than. As far as the members of the board being volunteers, the members of the board are public officials, elected public officials. The fact that you guys don't receive a salary doesn't mean you're volunteers. Volunteers don't have the ability to spend money. They don't have the ability to borrow money, and they don't have the ability to tax the residents of Arlington Heights, which you people do. You are public officials, you are not volunteers. You run every time. In fact, there are two people who were, who are members who aren't here, ran on fiscal responsibility. The $48 million that was approved was $7 million more than what you had said it was going to cost, $42 million. You're now going to approve this time $2.2 million, which will give it about $5.5 million that you've approved since the first of the year. You're $8 million in the hole, and that's going to increase over time because STRS Partners, Nicholson Associates, and Erickson Engineering isn't included in the $48 million. All I'm trying to get at is how much money are we going to spend on all of this kindergarten expansion? That's what I'm trying to get at. Thank you.
Thank you for your input. Our next speaker today is Mary Kay Baldino.
Thank you so much for having me here. Looking forward to hearing more at future meetings as you continue the discussion, and Dr. Vine comes back to you with recommendations and additional information. I also really want to say thank you for the police officers who are here. They're gone, but I wanted to thank them for their service. You know, really appreciate the positive interactions that they have with the students in the district. And I want to say thank you for the additional research. I read all of the materials that were in the board documents as well. So I know how much time that took, and I appreciate that it was, you know, a lot more research than the last part one kind of discussion. I do want to step back from this discussion just a little bit to ask the question fundamentally of why we are considering this as an option. Because when we make choices to do something like this, we are not doing other things. Are there other community partnerships that the district might invest in that help meet the strategic goal of community partnerships? Is this the only community partnership that the board is considering expanding? You know, we fundamentally haven't talked, I don't think, about whether these roles have actual performance goals. Unlike other staff members for the district, teachers, librarians, administrators, et cetera, who all would have specific measurable performance outcomes that are expected, we talk about being very pleased with the program, and I believe that. There's certainly very positive perceptions. But I don't hear any evidence on why there are positive perceptions or what tangible kinds of outcomes, you know, we're really looking for in expanding the program, which is a big investment on the part of the district. You know, it's more than a $200,000 a year investment to add those full-time resource officers. And I would suggest that regardless of whether the board decides to expand the program or not, that moving ahead with something like a memorandum of understanding sounds like a best practice and something that maybe should be explored even in the current program. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next speaker this evening is Susan Clark.
Hi, my name is Susan Clark. I am with the Be Smart for Kids Program, which is a volunteer group of gun owners and other community members who are committed to safe gun education for our community. And so in that role, listening today about the proposal to expand police officers, like another speaker, I really focused on the idea of guns in our schools and the impact of police officers on campus for a full day and all of the days of school with that gun present. I really appreciated hearing more about the program, hearing more about the considerations and the training than I had heard when I was here in last week's meeting. I haven't had a chance to read the material, but I make a commitment to doing that. I think that peace officers are a great idea. I think that having that community support and those community resources seem highly aligned to the pillars that you've outlined for our educational initiatives and goals. I don't know why we need to have an armed police officer present in order to achieve that. And so what I understand about our police officers is that a gun is an integral part of their uniform. And if that's the case, then I really need to question if that is the best way that we can achieve these objectives. That there are other resources that can provide similar outcomes and support without adding that element of risk that a gun inherently would have on that a gun inherently would have on campuses. So you mentioned some research. And I had similarly looked, particularly at the Everytown information, which is readily available to me through the community organization that I'm with. And I had two pieces of information that stood out to me in that research. I agree that they were very balanced in saying that when a SRO program is deployed thoughtfully with a lot of engagement, that it can be very positive. And that where they see negatives, it is without that type of planned learning. But there were 30 discharges of guns during the period of 2014 to 2018 on campuses, unintended discharges of guns. And those guns were owned by either officers or teachers that were on those campuses. So just the element of having that gun on the campus for all of those hours of the day would add an element that I think we should not take a risk unless we have a solution for it, some way in which that officer would not have access to that gun or others in the building have access to that gun immediately on their person. I've run out of time. Thank you.
I think it's so artful when our public speakers come, when our speakers come and pack such thoughtful comments in three minutes. So kudos to you folks for giving us such helpful input in such a short amount of time. We will move on this evening. And I also appreciate all the emails that you left and contact information so that we can follow up and have more conversations with you about your concerns and input, because we truly value that. Next up, we will talk about communication from district partners. And I'm hoping that our good folks at PTA are taking a break.
Yes.
That's good. And ABC Foundation, I'm hoping they're at the pool and having, taking a much-needed break as well. I do see our friend Allison Berg here. Allison, join us. Thank you.
You guys, I'm like old. And I'm going to read off my phone today, which is not like me, sorry. But I have no access to a printer when I'm not in school. Okay, so good evening. I actually love my presentation tonight. As you know, we have some of the very best teachers here in District 25. And you may have wondered, what do the very best teachers do over the summer to recharge for the upcoming school year? So I asked them totally on a whim yesterday. I sent out an email to all staff, hoping no one was going to be very angry with me. And I said, what are you doing this summer so I can report something to the board meeting today? And I got so many emails. And so many of our teachers are doing such cool things. So I'm excited to share. So your question of what we do over the summer, here is your answer. So the first one is, of course, me. Fourth grade teachers learned to play pickleball over at Windsor School. That's me and my teammates. We took on, jumped onto the pickleball craze. That is us. Oksana was telling me that she spent some of her summer with her brother, Michael, who lives in Texas. And due to her recent chemotherapy treatments, her brother and her are currently sharing the same hairstyle. To recharge, she's going to visit the Interlock and Center of Arts Summer Camp, where she will be seeing the talented youth of the world creating art of all types and meeting up with her IAC friends and shocking all of her classical music friends by seeing Donny Osmond perform in concert. And while she's up north, she will also spend time meditating on the beaches of the Traverse City area and mapping out the school year for next year. Yvette is reading for health, spiritual reading, and book club reading. She went to Florida with her family, and she connected with a relative she found on 23andMe. That is her relative right there. A fascinating story, she says. So you'll have to ask her about it. She's also crafting, walking with friends in the mornings, and dog training. Kim is watching her daughter's band this summer. She recharges with the community at festivals and live music from the local band, David's House, which includes her daughter, who is also a former student of mine, not to brag. I'm sure she learned music in my fourth grade class. Also, her band is also made up of other former D-25 kids from Windsor, Dryden, and Patton. They all are just recently graduated seniors. And their housekeeping, their new single housekeeping comes out later this summer. Regina is spending time treasuring special and treasuring special and everyday moments with family. Here are some pictures from Regina. There she is. And another one. The Walsh family headed west. There is Mrs. Walsh with her kids headed west to do some adventures. Beth, let's see if that's the right slide. Yep. Besides finishing summer school at Thomas, she led up to the Fourth of July, where she volunteered at Frontier Days to help with hockey skills and spike ball, as well as walk with the Bookmobile and the Arlington Heights Memorial Library in the Fourth of July Parade, helped them celebrate 50 years of making library books and resources more accessible to the community. Ken, no picture here, had an amazing trip to Paris in Italy. He's headed to California to visit with family. Janine is spending time on the beaches in Michigan with her family. Amy says that she's on the literacy committee, and she's busy spending some time this summer reading the required text, teaching and reading before our committee discussions, along with posting and responding to others about the reading on the padlet. She's also thinking and planning ways to utilize some of the things she's learning from the book into her classroom. She's also going on a vacation to Washington DC for the very first time. She teaches American symbols to her first graders every year. So this time, she will finally get to see those symbols in person. She's super excited about it. Chris went on a girls' trip up to the UP and a winery tour. She's reconnecting with family and friends in other states, hiking in the woods, vacations with her husband, a lake vacation with her children and their significant others. And she's reading books that she has been collecting on her nightstand, as have I been. Anna, there she is, is exploring Chicago's free outdoor parks, festivals, and summer concerts. Kelly is not only getting married in five days, but she loves spending time gardening. This is one of my favorites. My friend Megan tells me she's gone to the pool, movies, and out for ice cream with her kids. But the best thing she's done so far was clean out and organize her linen closet. Every time she opens it, every day this summer, she smiles. It has brought her much joy. Maria has traveled to Italy with her family to show her kids where her parents were from. Helen Kurtz is her friend who called it a legacy trip. Best way to recharge, great food, family, and beautiful sights. Katie, there's Katie's picture, is recharging by enjoying, in caps, leisurely meals with friends and family, in caps, completing some home improvement projects, developing a garden with some green skills, and cuddling and training a new furry family member. And finally, Nina says that she started a doctoral program in January as a double major, curriculum advocacy, policy and disability, and equality. Sorry, oh my goodness, let me try that again. She's getting a double major curriculum advocacy, policy and disability, equality and equity at National Lewis University. God, at that time. Her daughters Mia and Madeline came home from a dance competition today, and their dance team won the national championship. And so there are some pictures from Nina and her girls. So as you can see, I hope you enjoy this as much as I enjoy collecting the information. Our teachers are up to all kinds of awesome things, recharging, getting ready for the school year in the fall. So thank you for letting me share. Enjoy the rest of summer.
And before you leave, Allison, what have you been up to?
Oh my, well, besides playing pickleball, I've been up to Michigan and to White Sox game and just spending time with my kids, also reading books. I had a big pile. I've done three so far. So that's pretty impressive for me.
That's awesome. Thank you so much for sharing. We're so glad that our educators are modeling work-life balance for us and recharging for our students who are going to be here before we know it. I also, actually, as I go from court to court and watching basketball and so forth, I'm always so impressed that our educators, many of them come to watch all these summer basketball games and baseball games. And us parents like have to be there. The teachers don't have to be there. And they're there and so appreciated. So thank you for that. That was so fun. Okay, moving on to the consent agenda, which is an action item. Can I have a motion, please?
Madam President?
Yes, Greg.
I move that the Board of Education approve those items on the consent agenda as follows. A, personnel report, an addendum to personnel report. B, treasurer's report. C, invoices. D, special board meeting minutes of June 5, 2023. E, regular enclosed session meeting minutes of June 13, 2023. F, superintendent memberships and professional development.
Okay, excellent. Thank you, Greg. A second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Kevin. Lana, could you please call the vote?
Erman?
Yes.
Scott Bellato?
Yes.
Jogi?
Yes.
Sir Niglio?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Thank you. And then moving on to student learning, Dr. Fitzpatrick will review the instructional materials for 2023, 2024. This is an annual item so that the board is updated on the materials that are utilized in our instructional programs. Good to see you.
Good to see you. Yeah, well, I did not organize my linen closet. I did organize our list of instructional materials this summer. So that is provided to you. As you mentioned, this is an annual item that will be presented to the board about this time before each school year. The list, if you've taken a look at it, some of our, most of our materials are consistent with the previous year. We do change the color of any new materials. So any families or individuals that read through the list can see what is new. So coming up for this school year, the board will recall that you rather recently approved a new math curriculum, elementary math curriculum for next year. So those are new materials that appear on our list. And as just a reminder, due diligence has been exercised in selecting the materials that meet the needs of our students and are developmentally appropriate. This list reflects core instructional materials. Teachers may, of course, supplement these core resources with others when they determine it's in the best interest of their students or classroom. And just as a reminder as well, parents may inspect any textbook or instructional material simply by contacting the district office. And then this list, now that we've discussed it, will be posted on the website for any other individuals to view.
Thank you so much, Dr. Fitzpatrick.
You're welcome.
Any questions, comments? So I guess we'll give you some homework assignment for this weekend to do your closet.
Okay. Don't, I hope my husband's not watching.
No, take a break, relax over the weekend. Thank you so much. Okay. We have additional community input, Lana? Thank you. Lauren?
Broncato.
Yes, please welcome, Lauren.
Lauren.
We like your T-shirt.
Oh, thank you. Okay. I want to say thank you all for being here. My name is Lauren Broncato. I'm a community member. I'm a new district parent, incoming kindergartner. And then one, like in a couple of years, she'll be running around too. So I wanted to just comment. I don't have a timer. This is like very exciting. I should have said nothing. I wanted to comment on the SRO. Thank you so much for the information that you presented. I had the opportunity to talk with Dr. Vine about this not too long ago, so some of the information is still fresh. There were mainly just a couple of key points that I wanted to come and impart onto the board, one of which was in our discussion and clearly laid out in the meeting tonight, that this was an initiative that the Arlington Heights Police Department initiated. This wasn't, you know, everyone sitting around saying, like, how can we improve our school system and our community partnerships? Although I know that is a key tenet of the work that you're doing and like directing principle. The, forgive me, I don't remember his name, but one of the gentlemen from the police department came. And he even said in his own anecdote of how did this idea come about, that the police department wanted to up their game. So as a parent, thinking, well, the police department wants to up their game, this is what they're proposing, I don't necessarily like feel compelled that that's a great argument. The police department just like wants to improve things for themselves. As a professional in the field, I work in the healthcare field and specifically mental health care. I come to this and I say, well, where's the, like, there's got to be some evidence. There's got to be some information here. I side with everyone who's talked about the importance of being able to look at evidence in order to direct a decision like this. Dr. Vine was very kind to spend some time talking to me and some other members of the EWC group. And what we learned from that, among many things, is that there hasn't really been any kind of formal tracking, any formal evidence gathered from the community, from, you know, administrative staff around what the usefulness and even maybe how to describe and specify what areas of usefulness these SROs are providing to the schools as they are now. So I think to myself, okay, well, if there's no tracking, they've been in the schools for years, as was discussed earlier today in the meeting, that seems to me like a really great place to start. We already have some version of this program going. I've heard so many of you saying, we have value. I wrote a couple quotes down. Our program is successful here. Let's see, very impactful, value added, many positive connections. How are you measuring those statements? There isn't any actual measurement in place. If I said to any of my patients, I'm going to have you do this thing. I haven't really measured it yet. But I would like for you to consider it and then also consider it for your children. I would take a very long, hard look at that before I would make a decision.
That's really important. Thank you, Lauren.
Thank you.
Lots of food for thought. Lana, do we have any more comments this evening?
Nope.
So as far as when we move on to future agenda items, we see a couple of topics.